Connecting up, wait. Or try something.
I've been having some problems with Zoom. I might have to call Phil real quick.
Yeah, it's good. It's funny, I'm trying. I'm gonna try something here open. It gave me like the circle of doom. Wait a minute. Please wait, the meeting host will let you in soon. Yeah, so you might, I guess that just put me right through.
No, yeah, I know. We're trying the waiting room this time and I'm having problems with Zoom. I need to get ahold of Phil right away.
Cool. Well, I will just wait and buzz me in a couple minutes when I should jump back in. I'll just, I will leave this one and I will talk to you in a minute. Cool, thanks.
Thanks, bye.
Alright, bye.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm having problems with Zoom again.
Okay.
I don't know what to do.
Is it, it's frozen?
Yeah, pretty much.
And?
I have not, I'll have not restarted just yet. I can restart right now.
Um, yeah, let's go ahead and reset because I'm just getting logged in now. I'll get you up and going.
I'll restart then.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, here it's here.
Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, Joe, I can hear you perfectly. Yes, ma'am. So I'm having problems with Zoom again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know what to do.
Is it, it's frozen?
Yeah, pretty much.
And?
I have not, I'll have not restarted just yet. I can restart right now.
Um, yeah, let's go ahead and reset because I'm just getting logged in now. I'll get you up and going.
I'll restart then.
Okay.
And then, here it's here.
It's almost in. Hey Kate, are we good for go at seven?
We are, sir.
Sweet. We got everybody, we got everybody. George D., Chris. I guess. Alright, I'm showing seven o'clock on my phone. If everybody's ready to go, let's get started. I'd like to call to meeting the order. South Haven City Council for Monday, February the first, 2021. And we will start off with a roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold?
Yeah.
Chris Campbell?
Here.
Joe Reiser?
Here.
Steve Schleck?
Here.
George Sleeper? George Sleeper?
Here.
Uh, Latisha Wilkins?
Here.
Scott Smith?
I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. As you all see, we are still stranded in our homes. We are not in person. After some research, we found out we are still gonna be having these meetings for a few more weeks. Via Zoom, so my apologies. At this time, we are gonna have a proclamation for We Care, and I have that sitting in front of me. If you're on the computer, you can read along. I will read this aloud right now, and I don't know if you've got some We Care folks on the call or not here. Kate may fill me in. I'll go ahead and read this through. So this is a proclamation from the city of South Haven to our friends at We Care. Whereas We Care, in the name of Christ, was created in response to a desire for our community to serve their neighbors in need. And whereas We Care volunteers provide compassionate care to individuals with basic assistance and resources such as food, personal hygiene products, baby care items, transportation, furniture, clothing, housewares, utility bill assistance, medical equipment, and other agencies. And whereas We Care partners with 35 churches, has over 600 volunteers, operates 25 pantries and assistance ministries, serves over 10,000 requests for help each year, and partners with over 30 assistance agencies. And whereas We Care operates on a budget of just $136,000 a year and provides over $2.5 million worth of services annually. And whereas We Care and its dedicated volunteers who serve the communities of Bangor, Bloomingdale, Greensville, Hobart, Glen, Grand Junction, Lakota, Pullman, and South Haven are deserving of special honor and recognition for their generous support. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city of South Haven does hereby recognize and honor We Care in the name of Christ for its 40 years of service. And I wish you were all here, could we could, we'll clap here, but again, what a wonderful organization We Care is. I've had the opportunity to see it in action, volunteer, just, just amazing people, amazing organization. So I will leave it at that. Kate, do we have anyone on the line that you know of that's?
We should do. We have Erica Morrison is here, and I can go ahead and ask Erica, she'd like to unmute and say a few words.
Wonderful. Erica, thanks for being on. Sorry, I can't see everybody that's on there, so welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for supporting us as a city and the work that we do to provide for all of the citizens in the South Haven city area, but also in the township and the greater South Haven area. We appreciate your support.
Absolutely. Well, this, anytime we can help, let us know. We are a great organization and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Very good. Alright, that took care of that roll call. We care that we are up to now our update from our county commissioner, Gail Patterson Gladney. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening, mayor. Hello. Okay, I have some news I just wanted to share with you. The jail remote video arraignment and meeting rooms, we have been getting requests from the courts and the jail for remodeling the courthouse and the jail. We haven't been able to do that, but this arrangement makes it possible for us to get some extra rooms to be used at the jail. The commissioners approved the request to purchase five single and two double video arraignment meeting rooms. Room for two people or one person, including Polycom units for the jail. These units will allow for private attorney-client meetings and remote arrangements from the jail, which improves safety and efficiency for the jail and the court personnel, as well as the public. And the total cost for those items are $55,564.42. Concerning the Homeland Security Grant renewal, commissioners approved the continuation of that grant, and it is for a three-year period ending on May 31st, 2023. Van Buren County is the fiduciary agent for region number five, and the amount of the federal grant is $688,788. And then the last item, just to remind those who haven't signed up on any registries to get the vaccine, you can go to bbcasdhd.org. That's for the Van Buren-Cass district health department website. And you can sign up for that registry and you will be called and according to your ranking and your age, different various other factors, you'll be called according to those. And hopefully you'll be able to get your vaccine soon. I think, I know quite a few people who are starting to get their vaccines this week or getting appointments. So it's been slow, but it's coming a little more today and hopefully in the future. There have been 4,491 cases of COVID-19 in Van Buren County, and that's as of today at four o'clock. And then the deaths, the number is 83. And does anyone have any questions? No? Well, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Goodbye.
That takes us now to the approval of the agenda.
This is Jeff Arnold. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Joe Reiser. I'll second it.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Joe Reiser?
Yes.
Steve Schleck?
Yes.
George Sleeper?
Yes.
Latisha Wilkins?
Yes.
Jeff Arnold?
Yes.
Scott Smith?
Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, items A through G.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's a motion. That's a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Reiser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yeah.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That takes us to new business. City council will be asked to consider the approval of special event application 2021-01. Warm Your Heart Island Sit to occur on February the 27th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. at the Welcome Island on Phoenix Street.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion to approve special event application 2021-01, the Warm Your Heart Island Sit.
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Public comment we'll get to in a second, but there's a way to, you can raise your hand on the screen there, and I'll have Kate fill us in on the event again. Anything new? Ms. Kate? Hey Kate, if you're talking, I can't hear you.
Apologies for that. So this is Eric's Island Sit for Warm Your Heart. They will be at the Phoenix Street Island for up to, I think, 12 hours along with Cozy doing live broadcasting, hoping to heat their, fill their coffers for the heat the assistance fund. This will occur on February 27th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And they will be making sure that people are wearing masks and using all precautions under CDC guidelines. And also here to talk about the event is Eric Morrison. So thank you guys again for allowing us to do this event in the past. We really appreciate it. Last year, we raised $17,000 and over the month of February, and that culminated in the Island Sit where about half that was raised. And so this year, especially with all of the difficulty that people have gone through with the pandemic, those ones are even more necessary now than they were last year. So being able to do the Island Sit would just benefit our community in such a huge way. And we are planning to have gloves and masks and hand sanitizer for everybody to utilize. But as it's an outdoor activity, most of that is gonna come with the people that are coming to the event. So I think we're gonna be pretty well masked up and gloved up just because it's gonna be so cold out there. We are planning to have a maximum of six people on the island at any time, and that'll be spread out from the front corner to the back corner. So no people will be mingling too much in any one area. We'll also have it combed off to give them a little extra room to be able to social distance as well. Yeah, I think that that pretty much covers that unless you guys have any questions for me.
See, if I have any, I'll just say thank you again. I know it's a wonderful event, and I know it will be the coldest weekend of the winter, so.
It will be always.
Guaranteed.
Yep.
Very good. Any Kate, as far as public comments?
I don't see any public comment to to make a public comment. Go ahead and raise your hand using the icon below or dial star nine if you're on a telephone. That will help us identify you if you need to make a comment. And I do not see anyone.
Who else? Okay, very good. Eric, again, thank you for everything you are doing and what a great organization and good event to raise some money. So we have a motion. We have a second. Let's roll call, please.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item eight. City Council, we ask to consider approval of the appointment of Mr. Drea Gibson to the Downtown Development Authority for a partial term ending in twenty twenty three.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion to approve the appointment of Duraia Gibson to the Downtown Development Authority for a partial term ending in twenty twenty three.
This is Jeff Arnold. I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Kate, you want to mention just, I guess it's a partial term. It's DDA. If you want to explain how Duraia this qualifies for the position as a person that works, does work in the downtown area?
Sure. So this will be for a partial term to end in twenty twenty three. The DDA meets on the first Wednesday of each month at twelve noon. The DDA looks at the city's municipal plan, the DDA downtown plan. It consists of nine members, which their main mission is to encourage the overall economic growth of the community by using their tax increment financing to fund community improvement projects. Mr. Gibson does not reside in the property or own property in the DDA. However, under the DDA guidelines, Gibson is remains eligible to serve on the DDA. The bylaws state the majority of members with an interest in property are located in the DDA district, and not less than one member is resident. So we have over half of the membership has an ownership or interest in the DDA, so that leaves Mr. Gibson eligible for to serve on the DDA.
Very good. I appreciate that. Is you see, is Drea on the phone? I'm I can't. I'm guessing it's some of the names. I'm trying to figure out that's him on the phone or not. Wonderful man. He's if you've been to any of our Memorial Day services, when we were last able to have them, I know he's participated in those. So I don't know if he's on the phone to share a little bit.
If that is, we'll try this one to see if this is him. Mr. Gibson, if you're there, your second Baptist Baptist, go ahead and unmute yourself. Are you there?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am in fact on. Happy New Year to all of you who I have not seen it to the mayor, my friend, Mr. Scott. Thank you all so much and everyone who are online. It's my pleasure to to help serve in the development of City of South Haven, one of the best cities I've ever resided in my life. I am also a pastor within Second Baptist Churches of Business as well as I resident, my residences in the township. So it will be more than a pleasure. I really appreciate the consideration, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you much.
Thank you, Drea. Appreciate it. Make sure your willingness.
You're very welcome.
All right, very good. At this point in time, we have a motion. We have a second. Anybody have any questions they'd like to grill Mr. Gibson before we take a vote? All is quiet. All right, let's roll call, please.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Arnold? Or sorry, Smith or yes, Smith?
Yes. Thank you again, Drea, for your willingness to volunteer. Looking forward to having you on that board. Next item. City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the PUD amendment for the addition of four units to the trail side at New Everett Park Phase One LLC condominium development along Elkenburg Street. To start with, we need to hold a public hearing, so I'll seek a motion to open that public hearing first.
This is Jeff.
Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Steve Slack, I'll second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. Let's roll call this to get it opened up.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Kate, why don't you give us a little update? As and that's just, let's let the public just remind people to get in the queue here on this one. Again, star nine, or again, you can hit the raise your hand icon. I'll have Kate give us a little background.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Matthew O'Connor has applied for planning development amendment to construct four relocated units at the trail side at the New Everett Park Phase One condominium project. This is along Elkenburg Park and I'm sorry, Elkenburg Street and Indiana Avenue. The original proposal approved by City Council fifteen years ago included a density of twenty units at twelve sites. They approved the configuration was for twelve single family units with four duplex structures with the option to make the to amend the PUD to change the duplex sites into single family, which they've done in the recent years. Excuse me, that was in twenty nineteen, so which decreased the approved density of that area. They're coming back to us today to add four units that would base on Elkenburg across from Factory condo. The city zoning consultant Brad Cordoba is here on the line, as well as the city engineer Mike Dot is here to answer any questions that the council may have. This went through planning commission. This was finally approved with the contingency that any that the that the four units had to comply or satisfy the city city engineer to make sure that they did not infringe on, I believe, the detention basis. For more information, I think I'll turn it over to Brad Cordoba. If there's anything I'm missing there, Brad, please plug it in, but I think that what we're looking at here is just the four units on Elkenburg Park. I'm sorry, Elkenburg Street.
Yes, Kate, thank you. You are correct. It is for an additional four units of the developer. Mr. O'Connor is trying to preserve that original density that was approved back in two thousand and six at dwelling. So when the four duplex units were altered down to single family units about a year ago, as Kate said, they're choosing to see if they can amend their PUD to add the four additional units located at the corner of Elkenburg and St. Joseph's Street. This, the the space that it's actually located in is on the original site plan indicated as open space. There is, as of right now, seventy four point six percent of that phase actually is open space. And if these four proposed units were added, the open space calculation would drop down to sixty eight point three. There is a requirement of fifteen percent on that phase. So that just gives you an idea of the percentage of open space that's available and what would be remaining if the proposal did go through. I am here to answer any questions if council does have any. Mike is also on the line to answer any questions about any of the engineering calculations or any of his analysis. And Mr. O'Connor, I believe, is also on the line to take any questions from City Council if need be.
That's correct, Your Honor. I do have the developer Matt O'Connor here. If you'd like to hear from him.
Sounds good. Yeah, we'll we'll plug him in in a second. Hey Bradley, thanks for that update. Just to, I mean, repeat for me again, the open space. I want to, I kind of want to make sure everyone's clear on that.
What? Yes, yes.
What it kind of the minimum, what it's going to be and what would the minimum be? Just clarify.
Yes, the minimum for this this project, when it was proposed in two thousand and six, was required to have a minimum open space of fifteen percent of the land. With it only being detached, single family homes on the site, it there wasn't much land that was actually being used up. So the total amount of open space is calculated as a common area because it's a condominium. It seventy four point six currently. If the developer were to add these four additional units at the corner of Elkenburg and St. Joseph, it would drop the open space down to sixty eight point three. So they are, they do meet the threshold for the minimum open space requirement.
Open space is perfect. And then it might be helpful. I don't know if who wants to tackle it. I mean, I can do it, but it just kind of the concept of a planned unit development or PUD, why it's important. I mean, there is some flexibility in those. It's not, it's not a traditional, you know, neighborhood. They're designed to be flexible by design. If you just want to share a little bit on just kind of why, why do we even have PUDs? Just so the public might understand why we have this in front of us.
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor. A planned unit development is a zoning classification that's permitted by law. And as you had mentioned, they are a flexible option that a developer can use. When this originally came to the city back in two thousand and six from a different developer, it was, this was the first phase of four or five proposed phases of a much larger development in that area where the Everett Piano Factory was. And that what this planned unit development allowed then was a lot of different types of housing types. So there were planned to be duplexes on site, single family homes on site, apartment buildings on site and things like that. And in order to do that, it's kind of a trade off. So what is permitted on the typical, what we call the the basic or the ground level zoning district? You have a little bit of flexibility added to it. If they give up a certain amount of open space, we will allow more dense development to take place, especially in regards to the number of dwelling units, the setback requirements and things like that. So that's what the overall intentions were in two thousand and six. Again, unfortunately, we all know what happened to the housing markets, you know, many years ago, and the development kind of petered out. And Mr. O'Connor's development company has picked it up and is finishing out Phase One.
Great. That was a perfect summary. Thank you. So again, we're in the public hearing component. Why don't we go ahead and take some comments? Kate, you want to maybe get people introduced and let them know of our time limits?
Sure. I have I have Patricia Gaston here. I will go ahead and ask her to unmute. She'll have five minutes. We'll have the city clerk. Check that time.
And can remember, just remind everybody for name, address, and all that good stuff, please.
That's right. Ms. Gaston, if you can, make sure to say your name and your address. You can go ahead with your comment.
Hopefully you can hear me. This is Pat Gaston at ninety seven Superior Street.
Yes.
Okay, I just have a question on the original plans, and I really don't know that much about it, but they didn't, I assume there weren't any residences right on Elkenburg Street. So and I assume that now there's going to be four residences there and four driveways onto Elkenburg. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that's a little bit of a concern to me, but I just wanted to ask.
Yes, so there will be four addresses for four driveways coming off of Elkenburg Street. Okay, any other comments? Please raise your hand or dial star nine. Mayor, I do have the developer here. If you'd like me to go ahead and have him speak to council.
That's fine, or it's if once, why don't we, if we can close up public hearing, we get to council, maybe we could just have him explain a little bit more that we let the public get through, and then we'll close the public and then.
Okay.
I just want to hear any other questions first before we case something comes up, he could jump in for us.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Again, that icon is at the lower part of your screen, or you can hit dial nine if you're on a telephone.
Give it another five seconds, and then we'll close public hearing. We'll go to councils.
No other hands raised, sir.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Jeff Arnold. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Steve Slack, I'll second.
We have a motion second to close the public hearing. This is a roll call vote.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That takes us now, City Council will ask to consider the approval of the proposed PUD amendment for the addition of four units to the trail side at New Everett Park Phase One LLC condominium development along Elkenburg Street. I'll seek a motion a second, and then we'll discuss.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion to approve the proposed planned unit development amendment for the trail side at New Everett Park Phase One LLC.
Steve Slack, I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. We've had a good description of why PUDs are important, and I think we understand what's before us. We said we have Mr. Matt O'Connor on the phone?
We do, sir.
Well, let's.
Yes, ask him. Let me just go ahead and ask him to unmute himself.
Great, let's.
Here we are. How are you guys? I I'm I'd love to figure out the video part of this, but anyway, so yeah, I am here and I appreciate everyone taking their time to sit down with us tonight. And yeah, we're excited. We continue to want to add housing to to our subdivision. So I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and I happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Do we have any council questions? Steve Slack?
My question really is a formality. I'm wondering with the motion that we just made, if we are approving as noted by the Water and Sewer Department.
Would assume as noted. Yeah, I mean, I think as.
The Water and Sewer Department has a list of a couple items that need to be make sure they have put in there, and as long as the developer agrees to that, as noted by the Water and Sewer Department, Engineering Department, I'm good with it. Thanks.
Okay.
Yep, and we've had a lot of dialogue with with Brad and internally at the at the city. So yes, we will certainly certainly make sure all those boxes are checked, but yeah, we we definitely have that dialogue and make sure that that's handled appropriately.
Very good. I think that answers that. I guess I will just say as a, I I've been in town now twenty six years. When I first came to town, I drove down that site and it was a pile of rubble or building coming down. As I drive down now, like say I drove down, I must admit, I'm kind of smile as I look to the north and I see homes going up in there. So I I think we should be encouraged as council that we're seeing homes being built. And I think Kate, you've got the number for new homes built last year. But again, we we know this beautiful thing called supply and demand. We need more homes in our community and and we're seeing homes being built. So that's a good thing. So I just again, want to thank the developer and everyone that's sticking out your neck to build homes for doing so.
We appreciate those comments.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Looks quiet. Very good. We have a motion. We have a second to approve the PUD amendments as discussed. Let's roll call.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Steve Slack is a yes as well.
Oh, Slack.
Good call there. I didn't catch that one. All right, we have next, City Council, we presented the twenty twenty annual report from the South Haven Area Emergency Services Executive Director, Mr. Brandon Hens, and he was going to tell us he's been busy. So how about Brandon, give us a report here and we'll go from there.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for having me. You're right, it has been busy. And I have copies of this annual report. I'd be very more than willing to email to any of the city council, and I have hard copies as well. I'd love to drop off too, but. with the mask on, obviously. But, uh, yeah, we've been busy. Two thousand twenty was our busiest year. We had two thousand three hundred fifty eight calls and uh, blew our other years away by about a hundred fifty and the lion's share of the calls we go on our EMS. Uh, city, for instance, last year we responded on seven hundred ninety six ambulance calls, one hundred ninety nine fire calls. The fire calls, uh, we mark them as fire numbers, but they include lip assists, car fires, trash fires, structure fires, rescues, anytime we, you know, go on a traffic accident, that also includes, includes a fire number. So um, we didn't have a hundred ninety nine fires in the city, thankfully, but uh, we did have seven structure fires, um, notable ones. We had one on Fruit Street uh, earlier, later this summer, I should say. Clementines, there was a salon on Phoenix. Uh, our saved property value uh, was well, you know, if, if you were to include in Clementines and the salon that we uh, we were able to get in there and make some pretty quick stops, that adds up to quite a, quite a large amount. So I'm very proud of that. And as you know, we, we're busy with water rescues, all this last year as well. Um, average response time in the city is four minutes, which is it's insane. I mean, I'm we're very proud of that. Um, and it's not so much that we have faster vehicles than everybody else, but it's it's the way we operate. Um, for instance, there's two fellows at the station right now. If they went on a call, whether it's EMS, if it was a fire, everybody would just come in and go. But if they went on an EMS call right now, two other off duty would come in to cover. And so for the next call that comes in, they would take the ambulance and so on and so forth. And we have four transported ambulances now. We've had them all out this summer at different times. So we were able to cover all the calls. We're very, very proud of that. Uh, we have a heck of a good group that cares a lot of our community. Um, training, uh, as a collective, we put in thirty three hundred hours of training this last year, and that's something we're gonna focus on a little bit more this year, too. We've been doing great. We've been up on our numbers, but we're really going to start hitting training and education hard. You know, educating our, our staff, but also doing some more public education, getting out there and, and, uh, you know, educating everybody on what we've got, how we operate. Uh, currently, we have about sixteen full time staff and thirty to thirty two paid on call and COVID, now while I'm thinking about it, we've had, I think eighteen to nineteen of our staff members have been vaccinated for COVID. Yeah, I have taken the COVID vaccine, I should say, myself included. Um, I get my booster Wednesday, I believe. And aside from that, uh, we were hitting the short term rental inspections this last year, as you all know. We completed sixty five pre-fire surveys, uh, twenty four fire safety inspections, thirteen site plan reviews and, uh, you know, suppression checks or suppression tests, flow tests, our deputy chief and our assistant inspectors have been going out and really, um, really slamming those out this next year will be a little bit uh, easier with restrictions being lifted, but we see a huge difference as the years go on with our fire prevention, with our fire inspections. I mean, knock on wood, we don't get the big, big barn burners anymore. And that's, you know, I, I feel like I just jinxed this, but I'm very proud of that. Uh, it only helps saves lives, helps saves property, but every, I believe it's six, six to eight years we can update our ISO rating, our insurance service rating. And the more training we can put in, the better our response times are, the better our equipment is. Uh, we can hopefully lower our ISO rating to, uh, decrease costs for our community and their home insurance and, and business insurance. So aside from that, we've just been busy. I hope to meet you all in person one of these days, once all these restrictions lift, but until then, I appreciate you having me on for the night. And I'll be happy to answer any questions tonight, or if you have any, you want to email me or call the station. Uh, my contacts info was on, or my contact info was on our website at S H A E S dot org. So, thank you.
Very good. Brandon, thank you. As always, thank you for, to you and your staff for keeping us safe. I always appreciate you and everything you do. Any council questions? Comments? Joe Reefer, unmute and chat away.
A question for you, sir. Short term rentals, you, your department does the fire inspections?
We're, we're doing the rental inspections. Yeah, we have an agreement with the city and our, we have a deputy chief who is in a certified inspector, as well as one of our assistant inspectors. And we have an agreement with the city where we'll go out and perform the short term rentals.
So my question is this, um, last city council or the one before, there was some discussion about trying to save money and maybe use a third party. In your opinion, and it's only your opinion, of course, but you think we're better off using your department or a third party operator for getting the cost, just in terms of quality inspections?
Quality inspections, um, cost wise, I, I have no clue what a third party would charge. I'm probably a little bit biased. But our our deputy chief and our, both our assistant inspectors are very particular and they know their job and they, and they know it well. Personally, I, like I said, I, I know I'm biased on the subject, but I've, I've worked with, with Keith, our deputy, our deputy chief, and he kind of heads up the crew. And for the twenty years that I've known him, he doesn't let anything slip by. Uh, he's very thorough and I think that serves well, you know, in inspection. And, and he's, he knows fire, you know, he knows how it reacts. He knows, you know, egress, access, and that's, that's very important.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Arnold.
Hi, hi, Chief Hens. My question, I guess I don't really have a question. I just, if you could, one of the things that the city council is working on is beach safety. And so just what are your thoughts? Um, you know, maybe you're pointing us in the right direction. What should we be thinking about? What should we be looking at? If we want to make our beaches safer?
Uh, I listened in on the, well, spoke a little bit at the last waters Safety Committee meeting we'd had, and there was a lot of good ideas thrown out. Um, Mr. Campbell had a few good ones. Um, he's actually, we've been kind of going back and forth a little bit. Uh, we might look at getting some different rescue equipment that we can uh, he's provided an area where we can tie some stuff up in the past and um, whether we do that or put more equipment on our rescue truck, but I, I think maybe a little bit more of a presence down there uh, would help. Uh, we do have our, our beach interns that will go out and change the flags in the summertime and and will, will pick up the slack if one of them has to take a day off and one of us will go out and do it or I, I think a, a presence by them a little bit more often, as well as, uh, we did purchase some some bikes, some bicycles, I should say, uh, to you know, run around downtown a little bit more in the summertime when it's congested. And, uh, you know, hopefully be a little closer if something happens down there where we can react a little quicker and our response times to get down to the beach are very, I mean, they're they're great. I mean, there, I think that we average around three, three minutes, three and a half minutes down to the South Beach. And we usually have to take kind of a long way down because of the middle of town being congested, but I, I think a bigger presence would help definitely. Um, I know signs have been kind of a big, big back and forth kind of thing, but I think maybe a little bit more signage in the right places might help as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Work to do. Thanks for continuing to look into it. I know we're trying to get together with some other lake shore communities as well. If there are no other questions, I don't see any. I will say thank you again to Brandon and again, thanks to your staff for keeping us safe every single day.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next. City Council be asked to approve the city council priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, which is the period July of twenty twenty one through June thirty, twenty twenty two. Take a motion.
Uh, Joe Reefer, I'd like to make a motion to pass the priorities for the city for twenty one, twenty two.
Jeff Arnold, I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Comments? Again, public comments will be here in a second. Star nine, or you can also raise your hand. I'll have Kate just walk us through how we got to our priority list and then we'll have a discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is the first part of our budget setting process. This is the priority setting process where council gets to gets to set what their priorities will be for the year and what they would like staff to be working on. Included in the packet is the list of priorities based on how your input at our session last Tuesday. No big surprise with the top two remain to be economic development and housing. Uh, we do see some new categories on there such as the diversity, equity, inclusion category. Um, we do see that future planning, management and conservation of the waterfront, that's kind of been kind of pushed together from previous years where we had, um, the high water issues as well as maybe the, the preservation and improvement of the maritime district, which is our harbor area. So that would be priority listed number five. Public roads continue to be a high priority. They're priority number six. We see the development of a community vision state statement, uh, which is number seven, as well as parks, public spaces, community rec is number eight. Uh, we see codification as, um, codification of the city ordinances as number ten. And a new item for this year is priority number nine, which is fiscal responsibility and budgetary restraint, uh, which will just focus staff efforts on adopted priorities. Uh, so we've seen some new, some new priorities here for this council, but some old ones that continue to be a mainstay.
Very good. Nice summary. Thank you. Um, again, were there any public comments called in yet? I know we made the reference there.
Yep, just raise your hand if you're a Zoom user or go ahead and hit star nine. Looks like we have Joe Wilkins. I'll go ahead and have you unmute and make sure you say your name and your address. We'll have the third time for five minutes. Mr. Wilkins, go ahead and speak.
Yes, can you hear me, Kate?
Yes.
Good evening to the council. Um, my name is Joe Wilkins. I reside at eighty eleven Indiana Street. As you know, over the past summer, hundreds of residents, which included Mayor Scott, city manager Kate Hoser, several of our council members, Sleeper, Reefer and Wilkins took part in a peaceful march and a show of solidarity for black life matters. But still, for many blacks in our community, in order for black lives to truly matter in South Haven, diversity, equity and inclusion has to be in a prior, has to be a priority. And so on tonight, I want to publicly thank the entire city council for making diversity, equity and inclusion a priority for South Haven. It's been said that diversity is the hallmark to a healthy and balanced community. And so it's very important in order to address the black community's concerns and to attack systemic racism of all kind. Dr. King once said that racism doesn't just hurt black people. It hurts our nation. It hurts our cities. It hurts all of us. It's a cancer on our soul. And here recently, even our newly elected president stated that systemic, systemic racism has plagued our nation far too long, which we know persists through policies and practices in education, law enforcement, government, housing, as well as healthcare. And so in order to help make South Haven a just place for all, I believe that diversity, equity and inclusion represents the first step towards acknowledgement and awareness of the damages that the lack of diversity and systemic racism have caused blacks or people of color over the years. As tragic as it may, as, as tragic as it was, I believe that the eight minutes and forty seconds of an officer kneeling on George Floyd neck has opened the eyes and conscience of many in our country and has caused many cities across America to focus on systemic racism, racial justice, as well as diversity and, and diversity, equity and inclusion. Which is why I strongly request the council to consider hiring an independent party to perform equity assessment of the city's EEOC policies and overall organization. This assessment will not only address issues with hiring disparities, it will serve to help South Haven fix the damages that the black community feel they have endured over the years because of policies and practices. In closing, it is my belief that one day all of us will stand before God and give an account of what we have done to help make someone else's life better while on this journey we call life. And so I ask each of you to search your heart and to do what you know is right, to level the playing field and to make South Haven a city that I truly like, love being in, be a part of as a resident. To truly make South Haven a place of equal opportunity for. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else out there?
I don't see anyone yet with their hand raised, but again, the hand raising icon is at the bottom of your screen or if you're on a telephone, it's star nine. No other comments, sir.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to any council questions or comments. And if not, I don't see anybody. I guess Joe.
I didn't know if I was going to save this for the end comments, but I'll bring it up now since we're talking about it. Um, I want to sincerely thank my fellow council people. I am thankful and proud of each of the people in city council, including the mayor, to support the priorities that we came up, especially the issue of diversity, equity, inclusion. It's not an easy one, and it's the first time we've done it. When we talk about economic development, which is, of course, one of our top priorities, I want to read something. It's one sentence or two sentences, and it's out of Time Magazine. And it says, City Corp, which is one of the biggest financial institutions in the country, estimates that our economy in the last twenty years lost sixteen billion dollars due to discrimination and sanctioned inequality. So when we talk about diversity and equity, we should also talk about the benefits of having that economically, and that's an important also priority for our city. So I think they go hand in hand. So I'm so glad we have that on our priorities and I'm looking forward to seeing this city implemented. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for the comments. Anybody else before we move on? I guess, I don't see anybody. I, I will just, again, I'm thank everybody for your time and efforts here to the community. We, we get frequent questions, you know, what is the city doing to encourage jobs and job creation? And again, economic development continues to be, I would argue, probably been the most important thing for years. And we continue to work with our employers. We continue to work to not only keep jobs, help them grow their businesses, as well as try to attract jobs to the area. With the, uh, the pandemic, our businesses, you know, many of our businesses have just been crushed, you know, our restaurants and whatnot. Uh, we have Entergy that's going to be, our Palisades will be closing in the next twelve months. So clearly we need to be focused, uh, on this area. So this is all hands on deck. This is going to take the city council, city staff, our employers kind of coming together and really kind of just thinking this through, how we can better prepare ourselves. I'm going to be calling on uh, Southern Public Schools, we'll be calling on the ISD, I'm going to be calling on LMC. This will be roll up our sleeves time. So very important. And again, housing, we just, you know, we got four new homes approved tonight. That's very, very, very good news. Community should be pleased that we are seeing some home construction going on in this town. So with that, we have a motion. We have a second. If there are no other comments, let's roll call the priorities.
Reefer.
Yes.
Schlag.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Next item, citizens in the audience or at home, I guess, will be heard on items not on the agenda. Again, if you're calling in, you need to give your name, your address. You'll have up to five minutes. Again, if you're calling in, you need to give your name, your address. You'll have up to five minutes. And again, you can raise your hand via the icon or star nine. I will have our fantastic city manager Kate Hoser help call people up.
Okay, no hands raised just yet. We'll hold on for a little bit to see if anyone has, wants to put their hand raised, raise their hand, using a little icon on the bottom of their screen or if they're on a telephone dialing star nine. No other comments, sir.
Perfect. City manager comments, Ms. Kate Hoser.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the council for their efforts last week in getting together and getting those priorities done. As I mentioned, this was the first part of our budgetary process, so we'll be meeting on February eighth. I believe that's our next, our workshop will be reviewing the CIP. I'll be following up with you on those, that date, that I believe we're meeting at five PM, and again, going over the capital improvement plan. Also, as we get past that, we'll then have staff start working on their budgetary departments so that we can have budget workshops for the council to review. Because our ultimate goal is to do the two hearings, I'm sorry, the two meetings that will need to adopt the city budget by June first. With that, I do want to also thanks, thank our public works department. Over the weekend, we, we received quite a bit of snow. We, I just want to shout out to them on their amazing ability to get the, put the snow cleared, our sidewalks done. And also, maybe, many of you have seen that we did have the social district segment. And again, we are not looking at an adoption at this time, but we're looking at collecting information from the public to share with us as we're looking into whether or not this would be a viable opportunity for our city and our downtown. I do know that DDA director Sue Brock is also working on a survey that would be going out to the public and the downtown businesses to see if this is interested, if they're interested, if this is wanted, if it's any concern. So again, we are very much in the outreach phases, just to see if there is an interest and whether or not this is desired. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Kate. Good job, as always. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Kate before we relinquish her? Say for good. Thanks again, Kate. That takes us to mayor and councilperson comments. Let's start with Ms. Letitia. Good evening, and how are our students doing?
Oh, our students are doing wonderful. In honor of our first day of our Black History Month, I just wanted to read this quick quote. It doesn't matter how strong your opinions are, if you don't use your power for positive change, you are indeed part of the problem, Coretta Scott King. So that was just in honor of our Black History Month and just want to celebrate some of the great quotes. And just want to say I am happy about the priority list that we came up with, and I am grateful for my fellow councilmen that thought it was a priority to put the diversity and inclusion on there. Also, I did talk to the city manager earlier today, and I wanted her to know that it was important that we hear from our chief of police. I miss that. We used to hear that all the time, so I think it's important that our chief of police is on because she is one of the leaders in our community, and I love to hear her updates of what is going on. And that is my comments for tonight.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ms. Letitia. Thanks for educating. Mr. George Sleeper, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank everyone who tuned in. I'm looking at the list of people that are attending and very impressed the number of people that are participating. You don't have to necessarily have a comment, but if you're listening, you're informed, and that's a good thing. I also want to second what Kate was saying about the public works department and keeping the snow off the, not only off the streets, but off a lot of the major sidewalks also. That's very helpful because I like that we are a walkable community. And that, that's very helpful to have clean sidewalks. That's it.
Thank you. How's your dog doing? I haven't seen him run by the screen lately.
Yeah, she's, she's hanging out. She likes to video bomb city council meetings.
Hey, that's all good. I'm happy mine are quiet tonight, so I'm the only one here, so I'm happy they didn't interrupt. All right, very good. Thank you again. Let's go. How about Mr. Reeser?
My only comments are, I want to recognize and thank the charities in our town that do so much good for people that need their help. And I really want to thank all those people in our town that during these difficult times, during the pandemic, during the economic strife that we're going through, that they reach in their pocket and still give money to charities. I am absolutely amazed by it and grateful that we live in such a town. Thank you.
Very good. Well-stated. Mr. Steve Flock? Is it time to get out boat ship?
I'm getting close. I'd like to just thank the executive director, Mr. Hens, for his report tonight and his service along with his entire crew as well. And watching the news and seeing the events unfold with our South Haven Police Department, I would like to thank them for their service and the professionalism they display every single day. Thank you very much for everybody's service. Thank you.
Well-stated. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I think I want to clear up something with the social district. I've had a lot of phone calls and emails for and against. But one thing I think that needs to be cleared up or cleared to everybody is that the social district does not close down the streets. I've had quite a few businesses ask me about that, thinking that was happening. If that is something that does move forward and does pass down the road, that involves a area that people can walk around on the sidewalks and public areas, but not, the streets will be open. So I just thought I'd clear that up a little bit. Other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Very good. Good comments. And, and the more important thing there too is more to come. Nothing's been decided, so just we're taking ideas right now, so we appreciate everyone's patience. Very good. I think that takes us to Mr. Jeff Arnold. Good evening, sir. And how's your education days going? How's the kids doing?
They're doing good. I was just telling somebody, you know, now we have more kids in the building, and so there's, there's already kind of a better vibe in the building. You know, there's a little more energy.
Yeah, my kids were thrilled. They said, hey, four days a week, it felt almost like going to school again.
Right. Well, I, my comment, since Chief Hens is still on, I just saw recently on social media that Rex Hayner was made a full-time Shea's employee. And I know that he had an excellent social studies teacher when he was in high school. And that gets me to Griffin Graham. He started his new job today. And I know that he had an excellent social studies teacher, so welcome to Rex and to Griffin. I hope you guys enjoy working for the city.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. And as with Letitia, thank you for educating. All right, couple of quick comments. I had a message from Dorothy Appleyard and former mayor Dorothy Appleyard, sorry. And I apologize, I got it this evening after I got home from work, and she had just made a mention to mention former mayor Betty Davis, which I'm happy to do. I think there was, I, I don't know there was any specific event. I feel bad if there was, but she was just mentioning women in not necessarily high up, but political position, so, so to mention Betty Davis. And so for those of you who know me, know I knew Betty Davis since I first came to town, so I will, I will absolutely say wonderful things about Betty. She was our first mayor of the city of South Haven. I will do a little research and get exactly the year, because I don't want to guess. But she was our first city mayor, and I sit here today because she twisted my arm to run for city council one day. We were talking about something, and she said, hey, you schemed up this wellness center, you should maybe run for mayor someday and or in city council. So there we go. Wonderful lady, and thanks to our former mayor Dorothy Appleyard for calling. Happy to plug Betty Davis anytime. Wonderful lady. I know she loved Lake Michigan. She had house on the lake, I know that, and I think Jack Daniels was her drink of choice. Those are my two most important Betty Davis memories. Great, great lady, wonderful ambassador for the city. That takes us to, again, thanks, Public Works. Thanks, Brandon, for being on the call. Your wonderful work, as always. Please, please, please go out and eat twenty-five percent tonight, so get it, get out and, you know, go get some food somewhere if you're at all able to get out tonight or in the next couple of days here. Just, and I know Kate, we'll talk about this more over the next couple of weeks and months. Just asking the public's patience or getting, you know, starting to get questions about things like, what are we going to do with Fourth of July? And what's going to go on with events? At this point in time, I think we all kind of will probably be accepting the fact that events and stuff this summer likely will not be full speed like they have been in the past. This summer, there will be, you know, we just don't know. I guess that's our take-home right now. We will make sure we're safe. We'll follow the governor's orders. We'll follow the healthcare department's orders. We will be doing what makes sense for this community. First and foremost, we want to make sure our residents are safe. So realistically, this juncture, things like fireworks, likely by the Fourth of July, we won't have those large gatherings. So that's, things could change, but we all are kind of looking around and seeing what's going on. So I just ask for the public's patience. We really will, we will be following guidance, I guess, as I mentioned above, of the state and the healthcare officials to see what's going on. And then on a fun note, see if you read the paper, the South Haven ski team, I, my kids make up a chunk of that team, so they're actually a ski race tonight. They'll have a ski race Wednesday, and then they have the regionals next Monday, so might see some pictures in the paper, all that good stuff, so go High School Ski Team. Good group of people and two good coaches. So on that note, I think that's all I've got for tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Thanks, everybody, council members for all your work. Good work on the priorities, and on that note, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
George Sleeper, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Be glad, I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's roll call.
Slack?
Yes.
Sleeper? Yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Have a wonderful evening, everybody, and I'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Thanks for tuning in.